All right, let's try this again. I'd like to call the meeting into order if you would stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone and welcome everyone watching from home. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee DeVore.
Present.
Trustee Gatt.
Present.
Trustee Kazam. Trustee Goff.
Present.
Trustee Wigington.
Present.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum, welcome everyone. We would be at approval of the minutes from the Board of Trustees meeting on March 7th, 2023. I would ask for a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion to the second. Any questions or corrections of the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. We would be at comments from the audience. If anyone is here tonight to address the board, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and try and keep your remarks under five minutes. Comments going once.
Mayor, if I may interject, I do have correspondence.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to read this letter that the village received from the Faveright family. It reads as follows. Mayor Phelan and Board of Trustees, thank you for all you do for our village and your kindness to Dad and our family, Scott, Sherry, and Laura Faveright.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, last call on comments. Comments are closed. Let's go to old business. Any old business come for the board?
Yes, Mayor. Chief Sutton just informed me that the Centennial Building, the wall that was supposed to be installed has been put up, been cared of, and the inside and outside security lines will be being installed this week.
Thank you, Trustee Gatt. Any other old business?
I have a real quick update. If you guys recall, when Illinois American put in their water main, it was assumed that a cross connection was going to be put in. Since then, myself and Trustee Goff have had discussions with Illinois American. They're on board with doing that. We would have had to take care of the permitting process anyway, so we're going to get that ball rolling so we can have that assurance of water in case there is an emergency. We'll be able to hook on their system and provide water to our customers.
That's the Lake Street main?
That, no, this will be over in the Toledo area.
Okay, I thought we had a connection on...
Oh, we do have one at Lake Street, but it is older and has not been used in quite a while. So, just to get an updated one off of a new situation they have over there, that's something that's going to be in the works.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Trustee Weisenberg, Trustee Wigington, at the last meeting I asked if you would start working on noise and music recommendations. Have you gotten any further on that?
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Mayor. We have had some feedback, and I know it has come up at some of the events that have been around the heights currently, and I think this board should start with the baseline of our existing ordinance and work from there. So, I think if this board wants to put this on the agenda, I think what we would do is, from a starting point, is what we currently have codified, and if amendments need to be made, I would ask, Mr. Mayor, that you bring the current version of our ordinance to a meeting so that they, if amendments need to be made to the existing ordinance, they can be made at that time.
All right, well, if that's the way you want to do it, I thought it would be a better and simpler way if you two simply worked off of that ordinance with council and with the chief, and then brought forth recommendations to the board in a draft, new draft ordinance. I thought that would be simpler and easier, but if that's the way you want to do it, we can do it that way.
We're certainly happy to do that. I think that from a codification standpoint, the existing ordinance is what's on the books now, and if we want to make amendments on that, you know, I think that's definitely a board decision, but we have to have, you know, we have to enforce what is written. And so, if we are enforcing something that is other than what's written, then we need to have something written that is enforceable.
Okay. Any other old business? Let's get right into new business. First is the approval of the consent agenda. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. Any discussion on that? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gatt.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is Resolution 2023-04, a resolution of the Village of Peoria Heights approving a grant agreement with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. This is joint with administration, always requests grants, and Trustee Goff on the public work side, so Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-04.
Trustee Goff, second again. All right, sir, if you would set up the grant piece, and we'll go to Trustee Goff about the importance of this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Actually, since Director Aldridge has been working so diligently on this, I was going to defer to him for an explanation.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Thank you. So, this is a grant through the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, again, for lead service line inventory, so it's a special grant program, not a loan program. We've been approved for funding, the village has been approved for the first round of this funding in the amount of $40,000. So, that's a straight grant, again, there, in this particular grant, there's no matching requirement from the village. The, this agreement is kind of a standard form agreement for the Illinois EPA. Council has reviewed it with the EPA, so, again, no issues with the agreement, although it's fairly lengthy. It does include many of the federal and state provisions that you'll see in agreements of this type. Did want to point out, the contract completion for this project to get the inventory complete is April 15th of 2024. So, we'll begin this process immediately after the agreement is approved. We'll have to select a consultant to help us out, but again, our current consultant, Woodard and Curran, wouldn't be under contract for this particular project, but would be very interested in helping us out with that if we selected them. So, we'll have to get into a selection process, a qualification-based selection to find a consultant to help with this, and then after the April, either on April 15th of 2024 or before, we would have to report the findings to the Illinois EPA on how many lead service lines exist in the community.
Trustee Goff, I'm going to go to you next, and we'll open it up for questions and discussion.
The lead service lines that this is going to help us determine, of course, this is not for replacement, this is for determination of which lines in the village may be led. So, it's going to come in very handy.
Thank you. Questions?
Thanks, Mayor, I have a few. The inventory cost, it says up to $40,000. Do you know how much the inventory is going to cost?
Wayne, would you answer that, please?
This, again, was an estimate prepared by Woodard and Curran, so I think they would, you know, they helped us supply for this grant, so, in particular, if they get selected, I hope we would stay within that budget. But, yes, I mean, any additional cost would have to be borne by the village if there were additional costs.
Do we have a rough estimate on what the percentage of lead service lines are in the village?
Currently, we currently have 26, roughly 2,600 service lines, and we currently have 1,600 undetermined lines, so we're not sure what they are. That's what part, that's what this is going to help us find out. I believe we have around 180 lead lines for sure. I couldn't tell you the perfect numbers on each one, but we have roughly about 1,000 lines determined of what they are, and it seems like right now there's about 200 lead lines out of those 1,000. Yeah.
Is that all, Trustee Weisenberg?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
Superintendent Chandler, so, those numbers you just cited, we are using that for our initial material inventory, which was completed, I suppose, last year.
Right, so, we've been doing that for a few years, actually. In April of this year, the list is going to be much more extensive, and so, in the past, it's just been, we have 2,600 lines, we've got this many lead lines, this many this, and this many unknown. Now, this next list we turn in is going to be address-specific. Every address, every service has to be listed on this list, and it either has to be determined if it's lead, copper, plastic, other, you know, or unknown. So, this initial list is going to be the most intensive one we've put in so far.
This one due the next month?
Next month, right, yes.
And then the following month, following year?
The following year will be the final list. If anything that is unknown is going to be considered lead. At that point, they determine how many you have to replace every year. I believe it's 15 or 17 years, depending on how many you have, that you have. And you, I believe you were asking about the loan number earlier, and the loan number is determined currently off of us having roughly 1,600 lead lines. So, that certainly could go down, but it certainly could stay the same. So, that's what they're going on right now, as far as I can tell.
Identifying these lead service lines that are unknown, is it going to require any encroachment onto private property to dig up any of these, to take a look?
So, the EPA is not requiring us to excavate and dig down and find out for sure if we can, so, we did a meter replacement five, six years ago, whatever it was. We have pictures from that. We don't have all the pictures, but I've gone through all of those, and with those you can determine what's coming in the house as what's in the yard, basically.
So, that gives us like a partial idea?
Partial, that's the list we have now.
Okay.
That's been going through. Now, we'll have to, we've kind of come up with a possible plan of sending out letters to the existing addresses that are unknown, asking them if they want to take pictures and email them to us, or if they want to, and we gladly will, set up an appointment. One of our service guys will come in, do a meter check, service line check, and determine from there what their service line is. That would be the options that we have right now. And that, and then, you know, if Woodard and Curran get involved in this, they may have a much better way to determine this stuff. That's part of what this grant would help with, I believe.
Are any of the lines that have been determined as lead, or is any of that based on older information, the old meter cards and stuff that were stored?
No, everything that I've determined is from those pictures, or if we've happened to been in a house and changed a meter out.
Okay.
Which we're doing now, every time we go into a house, we're like, okay, let's find out what it is.
Okay. Is there a specific zone of the heights that has been covered more heavily than others, or is this scattered across?
No, I just literally went through on the computer through every picture that we have and determined, some of them I couldn't tell from the picture. You just can't tell, the picture's not good enough, so you can't tell. That's where we're at.
Okay.
And Wayne, the entirety of this grant, the scope of this grant, is solely for the identification of, or inventory of, lead service lines?
Correct.
Has nothing to do with replacement of lead service lines? This has only to do with the inventory of lead service lines? Thank you.
Anyone else? A quick question, Chris, and I assume all this information will be on GIS then, so we can go back in the future and refer to all this?
Right, yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we're currently putting in each, each individual address is getting that information put into it.
I know it's capable, but would we have currently on GIS the ages of the residents in those homes, for instance, if we're, you know, wanted to prioritize replacing lead lines where children are in the home? Do we have that ability?
No, that information is not in...
Will we have that?
Not that I know of, no.
I'm just thinking, there might be information like that out there. I don't know if it's individual information.
I think it's something you two should look into.
With reasonable planning, they may have some information too.
Okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gatt.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next is approval of ordinance 2023-1702, an ordinance authorizing the Village of Peoria Heights to borrow funds from the Public Water Supply Loan Program operated by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency for the purpose of financing the replacement of lead service lines, another joint resolution. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1702.
And Trustee Goff, thank you. All right, Trustee DeVore, would you like to start?
Yep, I am going to defer to Director Aldridge for this one as well.
Go ahead, please. Oh, again, I'm sorry, go ahead, Wayne, and then we'll go to Trustee Goff.
Thank you. So, this is the EPA's loan program rather than a grant program, so this is a very common way to fund projects of this type, and these are federal funds, so we're seeing a more of an influx of federal funds into these programs right now. So, this will be probably one of the major sources of funding for water projects here and in other municipalities. We anticipate the replacement of all lead service lines in a five-year period in five separate phases, so this will be phase one of that. So, you've seen, you may have seen the bigger number, which is well over $4 million for all the lead service lines, but hopefully in the inventories, you can bring that number down. So, but this, again, is for the phase one. Again, it's the EPA State Revolving Loan Program, as we use that phrase, that's what that is, also known as the SRF program. This ordinance will authorize the loan from the EPA for the phase one at a cost of $789,000. Timeframe, phase one of this project is anticipated to begin about a year from now, May of 24, and to be completed a year after that, May of 25. Again, it could be recently a continuing program, you know, we may have to apply again for this funding for the subsequent phases. Various loan incentives are offered by the EPA based on the community's size and economic demographics, things like that, so, such as reduced interest rates and principal forgiveness are the primary incentives. So, the village actually qualifies for the small community interest rate and an environmental discount. Principal forgiveness is also being offered at this time as funds remain in this program. So, this is what makes this program great. Again, if we strike while the iron's hot, we can get up to 100% principal forgiveness. So, in a sense, that makes this loan turn into a grant. So, that's why timing is of the essence in dealing with these projects. So, right now, we're hopeful from the documents we have from the EPA that we can get 100% principal forgiveness for a community of our type. But that, that will be determined, once this gets approved and we correspond with the EPA, there will be some form of loan agreement that will come from the EPA with all those provisions and that. So, we'll find out when they come back to us with the draft. And again, this, this particular item was the subject of the public hearing we held earlier.
Thank you. Trustee Goff, anything you'd like to add?
This, as we've all heard, is a federal mandate, and this is our first step forward, so, and as Wayne said, I think we need to move as quickly as we can on this.
Okay, questions?
Doctor, I know not much in life is guaranteed, but what are the chances that the loan would be forgiven?
It's hard to tell. I think, again, because we're early, and they mentioned it to us, I'm thinking that we got a really good chance of this. And our size, you know, we have a small community, and there are some, you know, the demographics of part of the community is, they look at all of that. So, they did offer, you know, if it's not 100%, they offered, I think, 49% or about 50% principal forgiveness, which is still a super great deal.
Right, okay. Anyone else?
Yes, so, Wayne, or Dr. Aldridge, I emailed you and Trustee Goff about this, so I do have a little bit of hesitation about the, and I understand the need to get this done, and I'm running the risk of becoming the village nervous Nellie, but I will, one of the things that we had talked about in the public hearing was that the public have an additional 10 days to comment on this very issue subsequent to our hearing today. So, we would be voting to approve this while still inviting the comments from the public for an additional 10 more days. So, you know, at that point, what's good of a comment a day after we've already approved it? Secondly, as far as this, as far as this grant or loan program is, if we accept public money on this, then we are, our hands are tied as far as that we must do this lead service replacement. We cannot pass it on, or it is up to our water system to do that. And my concern is, this will be, from my reading of this document, this will be the third loan that we have against the revenue of our water system, and this will be subsequent to those two prior loans, one in 2010 and another in 2011 under former Mayor Allen. And we keep adding these loans on the revenue of our water system, and if we had a potential person interested in purchasing a water system, we have all these loans against the revenue of the water system. So, I'm not saying that that's the option, but I'm worried that if we choose this route, we could be limiting our options down the road as far as what we do with the future of the water system. And I'm not saying one thing or another, but I'm just worried that if we choose this direction and tie our revenues of the water system to this loan, then our options might be narrowed in the future.
If I, yeah, just a couple of comments. A, this, you're just authorizing, you know, the ability to borrow money at this point, so, there will be some time before the EPA prepares an agreement, we come back to the board with an agreement. So, it's not until that agreement's aimed, we don't have any loan. So, that's one thing. The other thing I would offer, I, in my experience with the EPA and other state agencies, they're always willing to listen, you know? If you get into some decision process, they understand how things go. So, so, they're willing to listen and potentially amend things if that comes up, so, that's, that's another point I would like to make. And, and the other point is that, you know, this is a mandate, no matter if it's us or somebody else, this has got to be done, so, you know, and I don't know what the, again, the mechanism is for that, if our system would be bought by someone else, but it's something, in my opinion, that's to be done sooner than later, and we're willing, for public health reasons, we should probably get rid of that as soon as possible.
So, this, this act, this ordinance tonight is authorizing the procurement of a loan, but it's not necessarily signing us, committing us to anything?
Loan agreement is forthcoming.
Okay.
They don't want to do the work on GDP approval, generating loan agreement, committing all that unless we've approved the process.
And if we approve this prior to the loan agreement, will we know 49, 75, 100% at that time?
My understanding is yes, we will.
Thank you, that's all I needed to know. Thank you very much for your answers.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gatt.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
All right, that passes. Next, approval of ordinance 2023-1703, a special ordinance authorizing the seating of private activity bonding authority. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1703.
Second, please.
Second.
Go ahead, Trustee DeVore.
Okay, so, the village has something that's called a volume cap, which is a federal tax exempt financing. That is determined based on location, and we are allotted roughly just under $700,000. Now, every home rural community has an pay first to either use those funds for development, for affordable housing, or for any kind of project like that. You have to use it or allocate it by pay first. So, Tri-County River Valley Development Authority is essentially an organization that we can allocate those funds to. What they do is they are going to either, if, they will make sure that those funds either stay in our community in the tri-county area, and essentially that money has to be used by the end of the year, so they can kind of hold it in a reserve for us, so that that is there for up to three years, or if we don't allocate the money for use, it just goes back to the state, and the state can determine how they want to use it anyway. So, Tri-County River Valley Development Authority really just gives us the benefit to have these funds held on to, again, for that three-year period, so if we do have a project that qualifies for that volume cap fund, we can pull from that, you know, for that each three-year period that we allocate that money to them. I don't know if anyone remembers, but we have done this before, so this is just kind of, I would say, like another safe haven to keep that cap of money either for us or for a community that connects to us.
Thank you, Trustee DeVore, well explained. Any questions?
My first thought is we should keep the money for the heights, but what would we, what could we use it for?
Well, we don't have any current projects. If we do in the future, that's an organization we could, we could use, so as Trustee DeVore explained, we're making it available if there's another community out there that does have a project they can use it for. Is that correct, Mr. Aldridge? Is that... We're not using it, so we're just letting someone else...
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking, you know, maybe we should have. I mean, if there was money out there to be used, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, there's criteria, though, that, under their rules...
There's criteria, all it is is it's borrowing authority, the state has a pile of money that they say, people can borrow it.
Oh.
We're not going to borrow it, because we're not, we don't have a program, so we're going to give it to somebody else to borrow, that means they pay it.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
So, we're not, we're not on the hook for anything, but we weren't going to borrow it anyway, so it's not a problem.
I understand, okay. Good question, though, but this is housekeeping. They ask us to do this annually. Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee DeVore.
Aye.
Trustee Gatt.
Aye.
Trustee Goff.
Aye.
Trustee Wigington.
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg.
Aye.
That passes. At this point, Mr. Aldridge and I are going to excuse ourselves. There is a group of statewide contractors in the area for their convention, and their dinner is in Peoria Heights tonight. They asked us to drop by and answer some questions about economic development, some of the things going on here. Since the mayor pro temp is...
Since the mayor pro temp is remote, I'm gonna ask trustee Gat, as the senior trustee, if you would run things from here on.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, go ahead.
Yep.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of a position for code enforcement. Trustee DeVore, I ask you to approve this.
I make a motion to approve a position for code enforcement.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve in a second. Trustee DeVore, if you want to go ahead, please.
Yes, so as we all know, since about 2015, our police department has been running all code enforcement, so not only are they helping with fielding all of the code enforcement calls, but any complaints, any follow-up or things like that. Due to the call volume that we have and how many code enforcement complaints that we have, this is adding a lot onto their job duties every day. So this would be for us to hire someone for a position to only deal with code enforcement. They would be dealing with 100% of the call volume, there's actually some really great things that we're trying to work into this position, potentially like an online portal, so residents can go in and make a complaint, they can submit a complaint for something to deal with code enforcement. This position would handle that directly. It's gonna give our residents a way to have a face to someone, just one singular person who would be dealing with code enforcement, as well as that same person to be able to work on the follow-through for making sure that the code was updated, if there was a complain or issue. I personally believe this is something we need in, in the village, and this is gonna be a really great connection for the residents of our community to have that.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Wigginton, do you have anything?
Trustee DeVore did a nice job summarizing this, this agenda item. I would just say that from our public safety perspective, this is a very effective and efficient way to address this matter. This would not be a police pension position, it'd be an IMRF position. So from a cost perspective for the village, this is definitely cost-effective. I would say that, you know, in the summertime, we see more code enforcement issues come up, so this is a timely matter as well, with the grass growing and, and noise starting to go through the village as well, as the mayor indicated earlier. So I, I think that this is a good, this, this is a good position, this is, as trustee DeVore mentioned, we have a lot of effective and new ways of potentially reaching the public to address some of these hot topic issues, and I also want to defer to the chief, if you have anything further, chief.
Yes, great job by both trustees. This position will still be under the umbrella of the police department. Again, just to reiterate what the trustees mentioned regarding the increased call load for the police department, we do need somebody, and it's my recommendation that we have one individual that is focusing just on code enforcement. It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing battle, as you know, it's just not a one and done. So again, they will be housed at the Peoria Heights Police Department, and we're working on the online portal, which I think will be very helpful. Instead of calling in to dispatch, they can go online and submit their complaint, their ordinance complaint, that will go to that individual and also a supervisor, so I think it'll be very efficient. You know, we were talking about adding another officer, I think that this aspect of, of the police department, I, I should take priority, because we're getting into the busy time of year, and the officers just cannot give it the amount of attention that it needs, so. I know that I've talked to everybody individually, and I appreciate the support, but this is definitely my recommendation, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I, I did, I wanted to add too, with this position and with us coming up with our next fiscal year budget, this position is planted into that budget. If we pass it tonight, and we can still make everything function and balance out the way that it, here with this position in place in, in the next fiscal year budget.
Yeah, and just a, just a quick timeline, I expect I'll have the, the job description, or not the job description, but the job opening posted this weekend, I will start to conduct interviews from there, so I would hope by the time our next fiscal year starts, we'll have, we'll have another person in that position, so.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now we have Resolution 2023-05, a resolution in support of participation by the Village of Peoria Heights in the National Fitness Campaign Grant Program. Trustee Weisenberg?
Sure, thanks, trustee Gat, I move to approve Resolution 2023-05.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
Thanks, so this is something that the mayor, myself, Superintendent Chandler, and Director Aldridge have, have been working on for, I don't know, about a month now, maybe a month and a half. And this resolution is just a, a resolution in support of exploring this idea of adding a fitness court to Lions Park. It's roughly 30 by 30, and it includes a bunch of different exercises that you can do. An app accompanies it, so you get personalized workouts. Blue Cross the Blue Shield of Illinois, once we get deeper into this, does offer a grant program to offset the cost of this fitness park, and this resolution tonight will just allow us to continue exploring the opportunity.
Thank you, trustee Weisenberg, any questions?
Did you say that was Lions Park?
Lions Park.
Any more? Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is approval of non-union, non-contractual employee raises. Trustee DeVore, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve non-union, non-contractual employee raises.
Second.
We got a motion to approve in a second. Trustee DeVore?
Okay, so we have been talking about cost of living raises for all of our other employees now, we found two non-union, non-contractual employees. We are looking to also give them a one-time cost of living increase for this year for all of the employees that we have, either the police department and village halls that are not under union.
Okay, any questions? You, you cut out, trustee DeVore, can you hear us?
Oh, yes, I can't hear you.
Okay, yes, I know you weren't finished, I think you were finished.
Okay, so sorry.
Okay.
So we would be looking at doing a roughly, well, I don't, we would be doing a 10% wage increase, but with this, how we have done year-end bonuses in the past, we would be doing year-end bonuses, we would only just be doing the same cost of living increases as how we've done with our, not union, not, or with our union and contractual employees, so we would kind of just be reviewing them in the same rate that we're gonna be reviewing the contractual employees that we have.
Any questions, did you need to add anything, chief?
No, she cut out, and what, what this would do is the, the wage adjustments for these positions, the annual incentive-based evaluation would be revoked moving forward, so next year, those would not continue, they would just be in line with all the other raises, so. And again, as trustee DeVore stated, this would be a one-time adjustment, and next year, they'll be back to our regular cost of living, which we, historically, we've been in a max of 3%. So it is a one-time wage adjustment that, you know, I did speak with each board member individually to go in depth on this, but it is eliminating the incentive-based evaluations, so. And after you subtract that amount, you're, the total for those positions are just over $27,000, so.
Thank you, chief, any other questions?
Couple of questions, chief. So this does not include any part-time or seasonal employees, correct?
No, it does not.
And does this, I mean, it's a, it's an increase, but will this also be reflected in this new position that we've just established for code enforcement?
No, that is, that position was set as far as the code enforcement, that is not included in these. And how I did come up with that salary, I've done, I've done some research on code enforcement officers in the tri-county area to see what, what they are paying those officers and what the, what the incentive package is, and so we're competitive, we're not at the bottom of the rung, but we're not at the top either, so I'm happy with, with what we'll, we'll be able to offer this position, but no, it is not included in this group, this.
And I think we all know at this table the answer, but just like to nail you down on it, chief, this is budgeted for in our coming up budget, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, next we need payment of the bills. Any questions? Okay, I need a, I need a motion then for payment of the bills.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
And I got a second. Any questions on any of the bills? Okay, madam clerk, call a roll, please.
Trustee DeVore?
Aye.
Trustee Gat?
Aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Wigginton?
Aye.
Trustee Weisenberg?
Aye.
Okay, it all passed. Next is the Treasurers' Report, madam clerk.
As of the end of February, in the village-controlled accounts, there was $7,490,926.27. In the water-controlled accounts, there was $2,081,340.22.
Thank you, any questions? Do I need to make a mo, we need a motion to approve the report? Motion to approve, yeah, I just, I just said that, we crossed over, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the report.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve in a second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes. Next, I need a, a motion to, for adjournment? I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.